All right, he says we're live, so we're gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Jeffersonville Common Council. It is July the 6th, 2020, and it's just after 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call, please.
Counselperson White.
President.
Counselperson Burns.
President.
Council Vice President Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Croft.
You.
Counselperson Webb.
President. President.
Counsel President Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
As the record reflect, we have eight councilpersons present and one up.
Joe, Councilman Paris mentioned that he wasn't gonna be able to make it on the call tonight. So we'll move right along. Minutes, we have minutes from the regular proceedings of June the 15th, 2020. Are there any comments or changes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, and a second, Mr. Webb. I'm sorry.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Yes.
Eight zero.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
There's no changes, I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, was that Mr. Burns?
Hawkins.
We'll call it, Mr. Hawkins? Okay.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
There was some feedback, Ms. Gill, but I heard him say aye.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Right, we have claims to be approved, civil city claims in the amount of $3,609,107.55. Ms. Metcalf, were there any changes or?
No, I have no changes.
Anything? Questions, comments? Or motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Croft, second, Mr. Maples.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns. I'm not hearing him, are you all here?
Mr. Burns, are you still with us? We must have lost him.
Okay. Council Vice President Maple.
Aye.
He's on mute. Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
I'm gonna circle back, is Counselperson Burns?
He's trying to connect to the audio, give him just a second.
Okay.
Bill, would you like to vote on the claims?
Yeah, I approve the claims.
Okay.
Eight zero.
Zero. Then we have claims from the parks in the amount of $36,055.3.
I have no changes.
There's no comment, I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Hawkins.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maple.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Report of the clerk. No report, we'll go into unfinished business, we have Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 29, ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department that passed on the first and second in the June 15th meeting.
There's been no changes.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Maples and the second by Mr. Croft to approve 2020 OR 29, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maple.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, new business, Chad Raischel. Brief introductory on the full zoning code update that the planning staff will undertake over the next year. Chad's down in the council chambers.
You skipped, actually.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip over, didn't I? Excuse me, Chad, number 10 was Paul Northam for an update on the WAC turf field, I'm sorry, Paul.
Thank you, no, that's okay. I've got a couple things to talk about, we'll talk about the WAC turf field first. The turf field's been in place for about seven years now, and the normal lifetime on a turf field is eight to 10 years, but we've had some extraordinary life on that field, we're running it out every week and every weekend. As a matter of fact, this past weekend, we had a huge soccer tournament out there. Last weekend, we had a lacrosse tournament out there, so it's getting some extra, extra use. So that being said, we're starting to get some spots on the turf, some repair marks, some divots that have been repaired. It's all safe, we've had people look at it, the Moats Group who put the field in looked at it, it's all safe, but it's starting to show its age, and we need to start thinking about how we can fund that, or how we can purchase a new one. We're speaking with the Moats Group about getting prices on a new field, they ballparked about 300 to 450, but they're trying to get us an accurate price on that, we think it's gonna be somewhere in that range. So we can definitely get through this year, we may be able to limp through next year, but soon, we're gonna need to do something. So we've talked to the CCSA, the Soccer Association, that uses that field, and they have committed to contributing some money, they haven't said exactly how much yet. We're hoping it's a 50-50 split, but we wanna wait and come up with that dollar amount for the new turf field before we approach them again on signing a dollar amount to it, but they have committed to helping out with some money. I've also talked with Heather about a couple different options to raise some money, one being possibly a non-reverting fund where we can take the receipts from all rentals of the field, plop it into a fund, and after eight to 10 years, we could have $300,000 or $400,000 in there. We did the math on it, and I think after 10 years, we could easily have $400,000 in that, and that's not taking into consideration what CCSA would help by contributing to that new field. So I don't have anything for you to vote on tonight, just wanted to kind of give an update where we were. As soon as we get that new price on the Moats field, we'll bring that to CCSA, hopefully get a commitment out of them, and then come back to you to start talking about how we can get the money for that field. I'll move to the next thing unless anybody has any questions on that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Or actually a request. Can you get us a copy of the agreement we have with the CCSA?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay.
I'll have that email out to all the council members tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, number two is on the River Stage. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, Paul Donnichroff.
Yes.
Earlier in the year before COVID-19, getting some executives that I know with hands and aggregates, you know, TJ Adams Quarry, met with Phil Burns, myself, and the mayor, and they wanna get more involved in the city and donate money to help parks and different things, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that's still a possibility, that they would help us with what you're talking about.
That's great to know, we've actually been speaking with our city partner manager, Dave Simpson, about trying to get someone to put their naming rights on the turf field and the building. We can look at a couple different options, getting donations to help pay for a new field, that was one of them. A donor who would put some money into it, and we'd name the field after him, we would never change the name of the park. Whirly Athletic Complex would stay on there, but it might be so-and-so Field at Whirly Park. So we're looking into that, but thank you for that heads up. Okay, secondly, is the River Stage, and if you remember, a few months ago, we hired a company to come put foam in the River Stage, and it was a fantastic job. We took it down river, no problems, no leaks, it's done a great job. And I don't know how long we're gonna get out of that, he said we could expect to get as many as 10 or 20 years, you just don't know. But they did a great job, and it's working great. Now, back to the cost of the foam in there, we originally had a donor who was pledging to give us $170,000 for the foam replacement or the foam installation, and their grant was canceled, and so we're no longer getting that money. So Heather and I met the other day to talk about where we could find that money. I have money in my budget, if you remember, you also gave me $100,000 to buy new vehicles, so I could use some of that money in addition to my equipment money, in addition to some extra vehicle money. I could make it work if I had to, but it's gonna pretty much take all my money for this year, and I wouldn't buy any new vehicles like you had given me the money to do. So I'm asking to see if you would consider taking money from rainy day fund surplus somewhere else rather than in my budget. $170,000 is a pretty big hit to my budget, so I wanna put that out there and let you discuss it, or answer any questions on that. Okay, I'll move on to number three, if you guys wanna discuss that, I can come back in the next meeting, or however you wanna handle it, or I can meet with a few of you, whatever you wanna do on that. But I'm looking for a help out with that $170,000 bill for the foam. So I'll move on to the next one if you're ready. Okay, the last one is a transfer that we normally do every year, it's from council, it comes from Gaming Monday money, it's $100,000 from gaming to go into River Stage. Now, I realize River Stage is not happening this year, we're not paying bands this year because there are no concerts to put on down there, but there's still things that need to be done, we've already spent about $30,000 on painting and repair work that we had planned on having in our budget if the River Stage season was a go. So we went ahead and had that work done, we paid $30,000. We also have bills due for the staging of the River Stage. It'll have to stay up in Utica at its normal winter location the whole year because we won't be bringing it down now, and so there's a monthly fee to stage that up there. And then the last one is, we would like to upgrade sound and lighting. The sound and lighting on that was last replaced back in 2012 when Mayor Moore took over. We put some money into getting new sound and lighting, and it's lasted, this is, I guess, going in its ninth year, eight full years, and it's starting to show its age, plus we need some upgrades to the sound and lighting, and so I'd like to take some of that money from the $100,000 to use to upgrade our sound and lighting system. So I think that's gonna require, Heather, check me if I'm wrong here and help me out here, does that require a vote from the council? Or just, do I send an email over to them, how's that work?
It's already budgeted in the gaming money under the council, and the council would just need to have a claim put through by the clerk's office for that dollar amount. But we just wanted to make sure that you all were comfortable with the $100,000 based off of what Paul's talking about here.
And I'll answer any questions if you have it. Okay, I'm sorry, Scotty.
I say I'm not personally in favor of transferring the $100,000 at this moment with the COVID-19, and after we talked to every department head about trying to save money, I understand that those are needs.
Sure.
But at this point, I'm not comfortable with allowing that money to be submitted through a claim. I understand that it may be beneficial to do it while we're not using the River Stage, but maybe not the $400,000. What's the monthly fee for the storage of the boat that you wasn't anticipating on having? Do you know what that is?
Yeah, it's around $2,500, and so we're gonna be an extra six months that we hadn't planned on, so what is that, $15,000?
Okay, and that's on just one boat, so I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Yeah, Paul, why do we have to move the, or why do we have to keep the River Stage in storage? Why can't we move it to the Riverside Drive, just not have the events?
We could do that, no problem to put it down there. It gets weathered a lot harder down there because you've got the river and the tide or whatever, and the sun on it. Right now, it's protected in a cove where there's no waves and no damage from the river, but, you know, we could take it down there if we needed to.
Paul, have you had any discussions, or can we have a discussion on what it would look like if we hired a company that used their equipment for the River Stage? And so they own the equipment, we just pay them to do the, basically paying them to do the sound and organize the sound for all of our concerts and events?
Yeah, I think we did, I'll have to check back, but I think three or four years ago, we did look for a company, and we had trouble finding somebody, but that was three or four years ago, so we certainly could try that again, and just, and I wish I had Sarah on here because she could help me answer these questions better than I can, but there is an issue with using someone else's equipment, but I'll talk to her about it and come back at the next meeting and talk about it, but that certainly is an option.
I know that it may weather better up there in Utica, but I do, even though we're not having the events, and it does save us something else.
I'm sorry, Bill, you were kind of breaking up there, what was part of that?
I kind of agree with Matt, bringing the barge back, the stage back down to the riverfront. It makes it look a lot nicer even though we're not using it, because it looks like something's missing there right now.
How much, Paul, how much is the cost to transport it down and back?
I'm trying to think off the top of my head, I think it's, I think it's close to the amount to store it per month. It's about $3,000, I think, for them to bring it down.
And then, when do you usually take it back?
Usually goes back in November, sometimes October. We do run the risk of having to move it down if the river goes back up again, we had a lot of adjustment in the river this year. We had.
That was another concern we had, is that we move it down just for show, and then the river takes a turn, and we gotta move it back, and you're looking at over $3,000 a pop.
Yep.
I would personally support leaving it in storage, just to keep the wear and tear off of it. I see Steve Webb just unmuted, and he's more familiar with this area than probably anybody else in the meeting, so I don't know if Steve's got any opinion on that.
I know we try to save a little bit to move it down there, but I think it's best to probably leave it in storage because with that river, you know, it's been unusual here the last three or four years, and we could get issues with driftwood and then cause us more money to pay somebody to move all that driftwood. I mean, I know we're saving a few thousand dollars, but for what we spent on that, just a few pennies compared to what we've got invested in it now, so.
And with it not being used, it's gonna be subject to, I mean, potential vandalism, and we gotta make sure it's secure because it's gonna be unattended for three or four months, so.
Liability there too, last year.
So yeah, you got a liability issue just leaving it down there.
Yeah, and Paul, maybe if there's any maintenance to be done on some of the framing and stuff like that and painting, maybe it's time to do it now, you know, but I think it is.
Yeah, Steve, I appreciate that, the good thing is we did the painting and the repair work to the backside, there was a lot of rotted wood. We replaced that this past year. The only thing left to do repair-wise is the railing where the gates are, there's four gates on it, and each of the gates have been buckled a little bit, and I've asked the company up there to give us a price on repairing those rails. But after that, other than cleaning the inside of it out, it's in pretty good shape.
Good.
So.
I would vote to leave the word sad, I think it's best to store it liability-wise, slipping, falling, drowning, look bad on the city.
Yeah. Yeah, we do have people that wander on there during the season, when it's, during the middle of the week. We used to have, security pros had a camera on the system, and it would alert me anytime somebody went on the barge there. And a couple summers ago, when that was active, we got several notifications of people wandering on there, so I agree with the liability issues. So Matt, let me say this, if, should we go for asking for a partial transfer instead of the full $100,000? Or where do you think I should go with this? I understand what Mr. Maple said about the money, and I agree. Before this whole COVID thing, or right during this whole COVID thing, when it started, I had planned on not spending a lot of my money and saving 150 to 200,000 in my budget. Now, if I have to spend this money on the River Stage, there goes that, but that being said, I agree with saving money, and I'm trying to do the best I can cutting corners and saving money. But the truth of it is, we've already spent 30,000 that we didn't have. Heather, again, please check me if I'm wrong here, but if we don't transfer that 100, we're gonna have to transfer it from somewhere else within my budget to cover that 30,000 that we've already spent, is that right?
Not necessarily. You've also collected about $41,000 in city partner donations that have all decided that they were either going to be reimbursed back their money because we're not having a River Stage this year, or we'll need to hold on to that cash and have it carry over to next year, and their donations will not come in next year because they've made it for this year. So that's $41,000 that we need to think about of either having it in as cash or having it available to refund back to the city partners because that money's already been spent. So right now, that cash is pretty much gone out of the River Stage fund. So your $100,000 is, normally is $149,000, but it was lowered for this year because you changed the budget a little bit and added a few other things, so this amount was lowered thinking that we were going to have more city partner donations, and that transfer is usually made in the beginning of the year. It just wasn't thought of prior to COVID, I think that kind of hit us in a hard spot. So we do need to keep in mind that at least $41,000 needs to go into that fund at some point. Does that make any sense?
Probably need to schedule a time for at least a couple of council members to sit down with you, Paul, and maybe Heather, and maybe even less if he wants to join in, and kind of talk our way through this whole transition of what the Parks Department has become financially and physically for the city, because we should be, we should see a lot of savings in all of the bands that we're not paying this summer. The Aquatic Center is closed, so there's not no expense, well, there's not as much expense with operating that facility. Obviously, it still has to be maintained, but there should be a lot of opportunities for savings within the Parks Department because of the unfortunate circumstances that we're in. Then also, I think that maybe the council can find an opportunity to step in and help out with that River Stage Repair Fund, because, you know, losing that grant funding was not something we foresaw or could control, and we may be able to find a way to mitigate that a little bit. You know, the state nor the feds have come through with any type of lost revenue aid for municipalities or local government. We can probably find something to pull together for that lost revenue if some members are willing to get together outside of a council meeting and look over the numbers.
Sure, no problem, I'd be happy to do that.
Heather, one more thing about that, is any of our donors went ahead and said you can have our donation this year just out of good nature and plan on donating next year, because if so, I think they need some kind of recognition.
I agree, I know that some of them have decided to move it to different, different things like the holiday parade if that happens, or some other things. So they've kind of shifted their donations from one thing to another.
Right, so we have three events still planned for the rest of the year, it's the Steamboat Nights Festival, the Halloween, or excuse me, the trick-or-treat in downtown, and the Holiday Parade, which happens right after Thanksgiving. But, you know, talking to some people about the way things are turning, that may not happen, we may have to cancel because if the schools do what they're saying they could possibly do, and they close down after Thanksgiving, would it be right for us to have a holiday parade the weekend after the school shut down and open it back up until January? Is it the right thing to do? I don't know, we're still planning on it, but there is a thought that maybe that won't happen. So those donors, like Heather mentioned, they have rolled their money into other events, but let's say we don't have those three events, there's nothing to roll into in 2020, but some of them have kindly agreed to roll it over to 2021, which is a good thing. We don't have to give refunds, but it's a bad thing because we probably won't get donations from them next year. They're just gonna say, well, my money from 2020 went to 2021, so we're gonna lose out on some of those donations, not all of them. I'm sure, like you mentioned, Mr. Maple, some of them, out of the kindness of their heart, are gonna say, it was a bad year, we're gonna go ahead and let you take 2020, and then we'll give you more in 2021. But Dave's working through all that right now, and most of the sponsors have said we're rolling it over to 2021, so in a way, it's helped. Okay, that's all I had, guys, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Raischel, we'll move on. Chad, if you'd like to give us some words of wisdom on the zoning changes that you're looking for over the next year?
Sounds good, I'm gonna share my screen here. You all see that? Great, so over the last few years, the Planning Department has been talking up the need for an update to the zoning code. The code was last fully updated in 2001, and as I think all of you know, a lot has changed in Jeffersonville in the last 20 years. Earlier this year, the mayor indicated in his State of the City address that updating the zoning code would be one of his next priorities. Two years ago, Nathan and I put out a request for qualifications to find out what the cost of hiring a contractor to create the code update that we need, and those costs were anywhere between $100,000 and $200,000. Earlier in the year, the mayor and I discussed the possibilities of where these funds for this project would come from and how we fit there, and then the coronavirus came in. So during my weeks of working remotely, I did a bunch of brainstorming with myself, with my staff, and really came to the conclusion that, you know, while it's a fairly difficult and time-consuming task, I really believe that the planning staff can save the city the expense and do the project in-house. My compatriots over in Clark's. Um, my compatriots over in Clarksville, it recently did theirs in-house. Um, and another colleague of mine in Greenwood, Indiana, has recently done one in-house. Um, you know, they've ensured me that it is a lot of work. Um, but it is very doable. Um, so also just looking, you know, into the future, while pace of development hasn't slowed a whole lot quite yet. Uh, my sense is that, you know, depending on where the virus goes, things could slow down a little bit in the development world. So uh, working on a big project like this, I think is is feasible and a great way to keep my staff uh motivated and 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 working uh even if we have a development slowdown in the future. So tonight I just wanted to go over a little bit, uh, give you my plan for the update, the overhaul of the zoning code. Uh, our plan is to develop what we're going to call a uniform development ordinance and what exactly is a uniform development ordinance? Well, basically the city has a zoning code which was adopted in 2001 and has had numerous revisions in the last 20 years. The zoning code is primarily for the development of individual parcels. We also have what's called a subdivision control ordinance and this document was last adopted in 1996. Uh, so it's even older than the zoning code. Um, and it's had two minor revisions over the years, but by and large is the same subdivision control today that it was in 1996. Um, our plan is to merge those two documents, bring those two documents together in one ordinance that controls all development within the city. Um, this project, uh, certainly the need for this project, like I said, 20 years of change. We've seen tremendous physical growth and development in the city. The city looks nothing like it did 20 years ago. Uh, I if you look in the corner of the screen, there's a picture of the Veterans Parkway area from 20 years ago. Um, there is nothing there and and now, you know, it's a thriving commercial center. So we have had significant changes, not only in physical growth, but also in economic development trends. Um, you know, our population continues to change. Um, and when the while the population is changing, the needs of the population change as well. Um, we have seen numerous amendments to the document over the years. Many of those have been put into the document and have been, you know, really beneficial. Some of them haven't been quite as beneficial uh over the years and a a few of them have have sort of uh missed getting put into the document until very recently. So um, really going through the whole document, there is this, i- it's a little bit cluttered. It's a little messy. And you know, it it needs to be uh pulled together and brought into a a good, clean form again. Uh, the other reason, the other primary reason that we need this project is that we have an extremely large number of waiver variances, fees and lose, planned developments that we are approving through a plan commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. In 2019, we all had only about 18 to 20% of the development plans that came through our department could be approved at a staff level. The rest of those, the 80% of those had to go to the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. It takes me and my staff a lot more time every time we have to bring something to the Plan Commissioner, the BZA. It costs more money. It takes more time. Um, if we can get to a place where we're approving more things uh in-house, uh, that's going to save us time, energy and uh some stress on my staff as well. So primary goals, we want to combine and update these codes without making a really radical change from the current document. I when we're done with this, I want it to look and function mostly as it is today. I don't want the developers. I don't want the designers, the architects. I don't want our staff, everyone who's looking at this code. I want them to feel like it's the same code. It's not a learning curve where we have to go back and relearn where everything is and how it how it functions. I also want to make sure that if you live in an R1 zone district today, that you continue to live in an R1 zone district, that we're not making huge impact um to residents of our community. Um, we want to certainly work to reduce the number of requested waivers and variance and create the flexibility that's needed for redevelopment in parts of the city. Um, areas like 10th Street, areas like Eighth and Middle, Allison Lane. Um, you know, we've we've seen some deterioration over the years and it's really hard to do the kind of redevelopment that we want to see when our codes are fairly inflexible. So creating some of that flexibility, generating that in the code will be very helpful to us. Um, there are a lot of internal processes and procedures that we do on a daily basis that aren't really codified in the code. Um, the code was written when people were doing things a certain way and now 20 years later, we're doing things, you know, radically different. So codifying some of those internal uh processes will be really important to us too. Um, and then finally, you know, once we have this adopted, I I think that there's probably going to be some minor revisions to the zoning map, uh, especially in the older parts of the city. Uh, there are areas in Clay'sburg. There are areas in downtown Jeffersonville that are still zoned for Walmarts and Walgreens and the big scale commercial developments um that we don't really want to see downtown. So um, there will be some, there will be some revisions that we'll have to work through as well. Um, just wanted to give you an update sort of timeline. Uh, we've been doing a lot of review um as staff. We've been looking at some of uh, some other existing codes. Uh, we have been going through our our standards, our subdivision control ordinance, all of this. Um, so we've been in this review phase and now we're getting into this place where we want to engage people in the process. So uh, we're coming to you. Uh, we are going to uh be talking more to the Plan Commission, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, we'll get a website out. We'll do so. We're going to do so a little bit of survey work. Um, it's kind of difficult because the zoning code is is a little, you know, it's not, not everybody understands all the intricacies of the zoning code. But we think that there's some ideas, some uh thoughts that we can bring out uh into a survey just to kind of get the public engaged a little bit. Uh, we'll be talking to some members of the development community and I I really want to talk to some members uh in the downtown uh Downtown Merchants Association and some of the downtown uh neighborhood associations to talk about some of these uh smaller scale issues that happen in the downtown. Um, after, you know, after we do this engagement, there's going to be a lot of long time where we're just going to be sitting, you know, in our offices, doing all the dirty work. We're going to put together this draft. Um, you know, right now the the zoning code is is, you know, a 200-page document. A subdivision ordinance is another 50 pages. So you can imagine it's a lot of word pressing and editing and 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 kind of moving and shifting and tweaking things to to get everything, you know, where we want it to. Um, once we have that draft, uh, we plan to unveil sort of the draft document. Uh, this is sort of what I'm calling the meet phase, um, where we will bring it again to you, to the public. We'll probably have a series of some public open houses just to talk about what the new development code means to the members of the public. Um, and then finally we get into uh the last phase of the process, which is the adopting of the of the UDO. So we're going to adopt the UDO and then following adoption, uh, we would work on making some of those modifications uh to the the plan as necessary. That's sort of the presentation I have for you today. Um, feel free to ask me any questions about what I've just presented. Thanks.
Any comments or questions for Chad?
I would just appreciate a heads up on um anything before you start talking to the folks in the in my district.
No problem. We'll we'll get you in on those meetings if you want.
Good deal.
Yeah, I think uh most of us would be anxious to be a part of those public meetings just to hear what everybody has to say. Anything else? If not, we'll move on. We've got a zoning change request for property in the 4,000 block of Williams Crossing Way. This is a R2 uh plan development um and is it's changing. It's going to stay a planned development, but with some uh minor altercation or all uh amendments, yes. Chad?
Jack? Okay, this is a petition to rezone property. Uh, JT Development has filed an application to rezone property uh for a residential development. Uh, it comes to you from the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation. And I believe John Craft is, John Craft is on the call here to speak on behalf of the applicant JT Development. John?
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. Uh, as Mr. Merkley indicated, this is a change of zoning, but it's really what I would consider a minor change of zoning. This uh is a planned unit development district in an R2 district. Uh, in the Plan Commission meeting uh recently, uh, the Plan Commission approved a preliminary plat of Cooper's Crossing. Cooper's Crossing is a new subdivision uh that will connect with Williams Crossing. And because Williams Crossing was a planned unit development district, it will alter Williams Crossing by adding three additional lots to make connectivity between Williams Crossing and Cooper's Crossing. So it's really while it's a change of zoning because it is a planned unit development district, the need for it is solely as a result of modifying the original planned unit development district by adding or creating three new lots to allow for the connectivity between Cooper's Crossing and Williams Crossing. Uh, as Mr. Merkley indicated, it comes to you with a favorable recommendation. We're asking this evening that you uh pass the ordinance rezoning the property. Jason Copperweight is the engineer on the project. He is likewise on the call this evening. So if there would be any logistical questions with regards to the addition or the creation of three new lots and the connectivity, he is on the call for purposes of answering those questions, but we would ask that you pass the ordinance rezoning uh this modification to the planned unit development district.
Matt, I had a question if nobody else does. Um, I know this um, the Cooper's Crossing was, there was some resistance to it from, I believe, the Creekstone Ridge subdivision during planning, which is in my district. Uh, if we rezone this, allowing it to be attached to Williamsburg Crossing, would that alleviate some of the complaints of the traffic that would be going through the Creekstone Ridge uh subdivision?
Mr. Maples, I I I don't believe it alleviates it because the primary concern of those residents was they didn't want any connectivity at all. They didn't want the two to connect. Uh, the result of that tends to be that the connectivity is ultimately something that is desired by your planning ordinance. Uh, and trying to have developments connect, that was the reason uh that there would be a stub in one to connect to this. Uh, they didn't want any connection. Uh, and I think the planning staff and Mr. Raichel can address this, but I think the planning staff would like to see the connectivity between these developments and that's the reason for the modification or the change in the planned unit development district and the need for the rezone.
Okay, from my understanding that the 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 connection to the Creekstone Ridge subdivision, that's not what we're voting on tonight. That's already been approved, correct? So actually, uh, in my belief that if we approve this tonight, that would attach it with the Williamsburg crossing, it may alleviate some of their traffic concerns because there's another entrance into the subdivision. Would that be an accurate statement that voting for this potentially could stop some traffic from going through Creekstone Ridge and going through Williamsburg Crossing?
That would be my belief. But Jason, if you want to comment on that as well, you may.
Yeah, I can. I can address that. That this particular connection is a cul-de-sac at the far back end of Williams Crossing Way that that would not is not connected to the adjacent property. What this does is creates a connection point to Cooper's Crossing, which then allows a more direct route uh through Williams Crossing, out of Cooper's Crossing and out to Jeff Charleston Pike. So yes, it would be an easier route for people to get out. There's another route through Williams Crossing that also provides connectivity, but this would be a more direct, faster route. So probably the way people would go.
I just wanted to be clear in the meeting before we voted that I I do believe that this approval of this would alleviate some of the concerns of the traffic in the Creekstone Ridge subdivision. A vote for this is not or a vote for that attaching to the Creekstone Ridge subdivision, just for some clarity, but that's already been approved beyond the council's control.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Matt, if there's no further, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, if if we could, um, this is a public hearing. It was known for a public hearing. Um, Chad is down in the council chambers and at this time, uh, I would request that uh uh, Matt, open this up for a public hearing and see if anyone has appeared.
Yeah, uh, this time we'll open up a public hearing uh on the matter of the zoning change for the 4,000 block of Williams Crossing Way. Um, Chad, is there anybody in attendance downstairs?
I I do not have anyone attendance here.
And was there any uh written comment submitted for today's public hearing?
Uh, no, there hasn't.
Okay, then at that, at this point, then I'll close the public hearing on that particular issue and entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. White. Let's go. Yes, this is 2020 OR 30.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Cross?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Uh, then we'll move on.
Thank you.
We've got now a zoning change request for the property um at 3519 Utica Sellersburg Road. Property's owned C2 commercial and is requested to be zoned R1.
Yes, this is a rezoning application that comes to you again with a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. This property is located at 3519 Utica Sellersburg Road and it's currently a zoned C2 medium to large scale commercial. Uh, when this area was annexed um several years ago, uh, for some reason it was brought in and zoned as commercial. Uh, the maps at the time though, that that when this was in the county, this property was residential. Uh, it's my understanding, Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the history of this. In the applicant, uh, Mari Wilkerson, the uh property owner is requesting that the property be zoned back to um residential R1. And Chad can explain why the need for that. It just is as a residential, it's it's actually a residential property there now. They want to do some work to the to to their house and it's much easier for them to do that and get the approvals and the permits and so forth. If it's rezoned R1 because they're wanting to make improvements to the house as opposed to it remained a commercial zoning. It's much more complicated, more expensive for them to go through that process. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. The uh, they they basically want to add a a room onto the back of the house and add a garage onto the side of the house. And under the commercial zoning, uh, you know, which is the C2 zoning, which again is 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 designed for something like a a target. Um, a a really large piece of commercial development. It it makes it almost impossible for them to add on to the house. Um, they could get a bunch of variances and waivers and things from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but it was almost much easier to just go back and rezone it R1. So we decided to go that direction instead.
And and I don't know if if someone is on on this call of representing.
I don't believe, I don't believe they are. I I contacted them this morning, but I did not hear back from them.
Okay, and this would be a public hearing, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing uh in the matter of the zoning change request for 3519 Utica Sellersburg Road from C2 to R1. Is there anybody in attendance downstairs?
There is nobody in attendance down here. Also, for the record, I did not receive any letters or correspondence in regard to this zoning change in our office.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the. Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Were there any questions from council members?
I didn't have a question, but I would like to just ask the council to approve this. This is right down the street from myself and Councilman Webb. This is obviously a residential situation. If you're not totally familiar where this property is, I mean, it's right in the middle of homes, and it always has been, so I'd just ask everybody to give, give the affirmative.
Yeah, we talked all through planning and zoning, Scott. It was all unanimous vote.
Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion, we approve. I don't have the ordinance, no. So, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. And I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Webb, and a second from Mr. Hawkins to approve 2020 OR 31.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Right. Final item on the agenda for this evening, Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR, this will be 32. Additional appropriation, and this is going to be for the, well, several things, several of the things that we've already done, we're going to, we've put into this ordinance for the purpose of having a public hearing at our next council meeting, but then also, we have the capital lease payment of $167,300, which would be the first installment for the body cameras in the police department. Heather, do you want to add anything?
That one is new. There's also, the second one is for an insurance reimbursement that we received. So, this is re-appropriating the cash that we received for insurance reimbursement.
And there's several on there that were just, we've, you've actually already appropriated the money back when things were at the beginning of COVID. And we did not have a public hearing. Larry and I believe that you complied with state law, but we're going to do this to, to make the state more accountable, sleep better at night, because we know they worry about these type of things.
Yes, and I believe Chief Kavanaugh is on here, too, if you have any questions about the body cameras.
Right. We had Assistant Chief McFloyd come at our last council meeting, and we kind of talked through a little bit of the proposal very briefly, but I know that several council members had smaller breakout sessions at the police department and went over the body camera proposal. This is something that we've been working on for quite a while, and I sent out via email the contract that was signed by the Board of Works pending our funding approval. So, if any council members have any questions.
Only thing I'd say, Matt, is sorry, one thing I would add, I did reach out to the FOP Lodge 100 president, just to make sure there was no concern by the lodge or the union, and they advised me there was no concern, and they may have some small concerns about some privacy issues, but they felt confident that that can be worked out with policy with the administration. So, it was refreshing that they actually welcomed it, too. So, I just wanted to make that on the record, that somebody, I did make contact with them, and they supported the decision.
Good deal. There are no questions, we'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And a motion from Mr. Croft, is that for the first and second reading? Okay. Was there a second? I missed who said the second.
It was mine, Matt. Is this, is this a public hearing?
The public hearing will be
No. It's our next meeting, yes. So, we've got a motion to approve 2020 OR 32 by Mr. Croft on the first and second reading, and a second by Mr. Maples. Anything further? Okay, Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right. Thank you very much. I did want to add just a special thanks to Councilmember Maples, who worked with the Finance Department to fund that initial installment through one of our Q and capital improvement funds that we hadn't touched it specifically for IT and upgrades for hardware such as this. So, we'll move on. Attorney comments, Mr. Wilder?
Surprisingly, I have none.
Mr. Merkley?
I have nothing.
Okay. Any department heads? Chief Kavanaugh, I see you're still with us. Anything to add?
You know, as a council, as a fiscal body, I'd like to thank you all as members, working with the administration and working with us from the police department administration, and also communicating with the FOP, to note that we do have their full support, and it is very clear that you, as a fiscal body, recognize the commitment, and we are here all together in hand-to-hand partnerships and support the citizens of Jeffersonville. I'd like to thank you all and commend you with the work you did on this project and moving forward. Thank you all.
Chad, did you have anything else? Nope. Heather, anything to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and we'll go on to council comments. Mr. White?
No comment.
Mr. Burns?
No comment.
Mr. Maples?
No comment.
Mr. Croft?
No comment.
Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Ellis?
No comment.
And Mr. Hawkins?
Just real quickly, I would like to thank Chief for putting those meetings together. Didn't know if we did that last time. That was very helpful in understanding the situation with their, with their needs. Anytime you can break out like that and talk more one-on-one, it's much more productive, but sorry you had to do it four or five times, but I just want to give a shout-out and tell them thanks, and that's it.
All right. Well, I don't have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Ladies as well.
Aye.